How are you?
Do you need some help there?
Yeah.
How you doing? Good. You on TV tonight? We're live stream to YouTube. That's for sure. I didn't know we were doing that. That's good. I guess, are we doing questions in audio and stuff? Or it's just one way only?
Just one way. Yeah.
I usually sit on the end. Do they come up? We can talk about that later. I mean, nobody needs to...
Here.
Up.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Duffle.
Here.
Richter.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Chris.
Here. Fledges Legionants of the Department of Education. Fledges Legionants to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of law and justice, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Good way.
All right. Are we? There we go. All right. My report's not too long this evening. Want to start off, the board is going to be asked to take some action on staffing a little bit later tonight. So I want to talk about our staffing numbers for 2023. So again, staffing recommendations. I first wanted to talk a little bit about our process. I think our process is very unique and really saves us a lot of risks and so forth that other school districts go through because we base all of our decision making on actual data rather than projected data. So all of our students sign up for classes for next year. So we have all of our students, the incoming freshmen from our feeder districts, all the way up through our current juniors, have all selected their classes that they want to take for next year. The selections, the needs and our section needs, how many teachers we need, how many sections of each particular class, then are determined on actual numbers. So we know how many teachers we need at this point in time. A lot of school districts don't have that information and it's common practice in some places to go ahead and riff all your first year teachers because they don't know if they need them or they don't need them. They don't know what their enrollment numbers are yet. We don't make our decisions that way. We make our decisions on our actual data. This process reduces the needs again from reductions in force. We're able to maintain our high quality and retain our high quality teaching staff because we know if we need them or if sections have been reduced. I think it's important for the board to remember that when I'm talking about sections, one teacher, one full-time teacher equals 10 sections. There are five sections of classes in each semester. So there's 10 sections. So some other considerations for FY '23. I mean, that's our normal process. So we know the enrollment, we create the sections and we come to the board. 2023 is a little bit different. So we've got some additional considerations to talk to the board about. We know that mental health issues really are rampant across the country and especially with our kids and with our youth. We're seeing more and more adolescent mental health issues. We certainly believe based upon data that we have received from our social work department that the number of occurrences, instances, contacts that our social work department are making have skyrocketed this year. Therefore, we truly believe that we need an additional social worker moving into the 2023 school year and we're going to ask for that. We also believe we need an additional band teacher. Based upon the numbers of our marching band and how those numbers have grown, guidance department pulled data going all the way back. We believe it's time. We had, if those of you who've been on the board for a while will recall, back, I want to say around 2009, 2010, we had four band instructors or four music teachers in our music department. And when the economy slowed with the housing crisis, we ended up, that was one of the cuts that we ended up making and that has never been restored. And our program continues to grow. Continuation of the credit recovery sections. If you'll recall, this year as part of our way to address delayed learning, I call it delayed learning. The state calls it learning loss. I don't believe learning has been lost. I believe it has been delayed and students didn't get all of the information and it's our job to catch them up. Hence, we implemented credit recovery sections for the existing school year. We've provided data to the board showing the success of those sections. We want to continue those sections. So again, that's part of the equation here. And we want to ask the board for additional sections to reduce class sizes in those courses where students are struggling the most. Again, we also provided to the education committee, to the Board of Education, what are our failure rates are? What's been happening with our students? And what classes have students been failing? That has driven our credit recovery. Our hope is that by creating smaller class sizes this year, then we can start to eliminate credit recovery section needs as we move forward and we can start to get students caught up in their existing classroom instead of failing a class and then having to take credit recovery. So our goal is to try to be more proactive and to provide supports to students in their actual classroom. So those are the sections and those are the classrooms that we've targeted with the number of 30 sections. Now, I'm sure board members, you're gasping saying, wait a minute, what about the financial picture that you've talked to us about? And I'm going to get there. The staffing summary, we're going to ask for a total of 52 new sections for the upcoming school year. That's 5.2 teachers. Board members, if you'll recall back when we looked at our five-year projections, we projected 3.5 teachers. So obviously, this would blow through our projected budget for next year. However, how do we get the funding for the 52 sections that I just referenced? Four sections will be funded by the district budget. Well, wait a minute. We just said that we had 3.5 sections scheduled in our five-year projections. That's right. We're going to save in our ongoing district budget by 3.1 FTE. So that's a positive. We're actually saving dollars in our district budget. Where we can use this money is, I've been working very closely with Dr. Weld. Dr. Weld's been working with the state. We can use the CARES money, the elementary, secondary school emergency relief, the ESSR, we call it ESSR, some call it CARES money, to support delayed learning. So many of our sections can be supported through CARES money. In fact, so much of our CARES money must be dedicated to student learning delays or student learning loss. So we think that this is a great opportunity for us to use that money and target that money on exactly what it's intended for, the students that we serve. So again, that gives us our total of 52 sections. Again, we built in 3.5 into our financial projections and the net is a 3.1 FTE savings out of our district budget because we're going to use the ESSR funds. Any questions on that?
How long? How long do we have? Is this the funds, the CARES money that is...
It'll go through 24. 24. Now, again, if we go back and look, we have 18 sections that are right here that are related to credit recovery. Our hope is, again, that by reducing class size and these high failure rates with the teaching staff that we have on hand, that we'll be able to eliminate the need or significantly reduce the need to have this level of credit recovery initiative moving forward. That would be our hope. That we want to get kids before they fail, not have to have sections to support them after they failed the course. So that would be our two-year goal, would be to continue to see our credit recovery needs decline because we have lower class sizes.
So Dr. Ben, those 5.2 FTE, will we have to riff any teachers that are focused on credit recovery?
Again...
Am I misunderstanding?
Right. No, no, no. That will always depend upon what our section numbers is, you know, in future years. What's going to be our growth? If we have growth, if we have attrition due to retirements, if we have staff that would leave OTHS for whatever personal reason that they may have, it may not result in riffs. It may result in riffs. Those numbers won't be known for next year till this time next year.
Question. So the additional classes, let me turn to the next, your other slide. Oops, no. Go back to the other. For the reducing the class sizes. Okay. So if I take those numbers and then I go back to the other slide and take them out of your first column, is that what the enrollment numbers would have been?
Yes. I mean, we actually would have reduced. If we didn't add these sections back in, we would have had a reduction. We would have been ripping teachers this year potentially. Or ripping some sections. I don't think we would have ripped anybody in total, but there would have been some section loss.
Yeah. Because I think when I went back and kind of backed the numbers out...
Correct.
Your bigger one. Sorry. No, forward. It's the other way.
I don't know what took that one.
So that very first column is the enrollments plus those...
Correct.
Okay. So when I did that, kind of...
So if you look, let's look at English for example. That's a good example. These are the class sections this year. We add in our credit recovery. So these are our total projected sections for this year. Again, if you just look at our standard class sections, they would have been less than class sections we had last year.
But those numbers right there, what I'm asking is, that number includes your class size reduction...
Correct.
Initiative, which was...
Yes.
How many for the different Englishes? Like 10, I think? 10 different classes? Or eight? All those on the right?
One, two, three, four. Yes. Eight.
So I would have to take eight off of...
Correct.
Those. Okay. All right. So then, I'm just trying to figure out where we started and then where we are. Your, the, what's it called? The credit recovery classes. We talked in the education committee about potentially needing to add those at Milburn, which would only be a second semester need. The numbers aren't different on there. So should we include that? Or is that just going to be kind of a, if needed?
Again, we'll take a look at that. The key was that several of the classes, the appreciation of RET, the two sections, the appreciation... Those are Milburn classes. So again, our goal and our focus is to try to catch kids before they fail. Not wait until they fail and then have an intervention.
And then, okay, I've got more questions.
So that kind of shifts. You know, we came off of that remote learning year and didn't really know where kids were going to be and how it was going to impact everything.
So the failure rates for those classes, is that just using the data from the COVID time? Or are you looking at historically, like pre-COVID, those were the types of classes you were seeing the highest failure rates in? What specifically was the data you were looking at to target those classes?
It was specifically last year's data.
Okay. Okay. All right. I think that COVID, COVID CARES money, whatever, it has provided us the opportunity to try some unique things that we maybe wouldn't have necessarily had the funding to do. So going forward, just whatever data we come up with to help us monitor that so that if we see it being successful, we have justification to continue to fund that once that those monies aren't there.
I think that that is a, that's a perfect segue into, one of the metrics that we're going to have to use is to take data and say, okay, what was our percentage of failure rate in a civics pre-COVID? What was our failure rate in civics during COVID? What is our failure rate in civics now that we've implemented lower class sizes? You know, how has that? Does lower class sizes really make a difference? Or do lower class sizes really make a difference? Or do they not? And if they don't, then again, that's when we switch gears and we look at another initiative.
And since we did talk about the credit recovery, just to kind of kudos for that programming because in the achievement gap committee, we got some feedback from the kids in that class and I read some of their responses and it was all very positive and they appreciated that opportunity and wanted us to continue that. So since it got mentioned, I thought I'd throw that out there because I thought that was really positive feedback.
Right. We had a great success rate with that. Hence why we want to continue it until we can kind of level out to a new normal, whatever that's going to look like. I think it's going to be, I think Dr. Weld was the one who indicated that it may be 12 years to get all of our students that have been impacted through COVID, through the educational system. So it may be a long time, but at least there's going to be a new normal starting to emerge in the upcoming, you know, 24 months that we can take a look at and evaluate where we need to go. I know we have a lot of guidance consultants out here and I want to give kudos to the guidance department because they're the ones who do all the hard work to get us these numbers, to enroll all of the students, to go out to the feeder districts, to meet with kids and to provide us with this data so that we are able to come to the board with some accuracy in our numbers and say, this is what we think we need for next year, you know, to move forward.
Now, any more questions?
No. Any others? Okay. And I wanted to take just a second to review, this is real quickly. This goes back to our early days at OTHS when the administrative team came together when I first started at OTHS and we developed a decision-making model. It's posted in the boardroom. If you've looked over the bulletin board in the boardroom. But we do have some new board members. We've certainly gone through a pandemic and it's just a little refresher. When we come to the board and we ask for this many class sections or when we make recommendations to the Board of Education, it really comes and starts from this decision-making model. Our decision-making model really has two tiers that we look at. And it's, the first tier is all based upon impact to the students as the center. Is, how does this decision, how does this recommendation impact students either positively or negatively? We used it significantly when we were going through budget reductions back in the day. How can we least impact students? How can we least harm student learning if we have to make cuts? You know, now we're using it, how do we benefit the students the most? The next tier is our faculty and staff. How do we support our faculty and staff so that they can support our students, which are the interior tier? And then the community. What are things that we need to be doing and get from our community? And how do we support our community efforts that can support our teachers and staff and their students that ultimately support the student body as a whole? So when we make decisions, we're always student-centered. The other aspect of our decision-making model, in the past, we've always kind of looked at the priorities in terms of courses. That doesn't mean that one course is more important or less important than another. Some are just mandated. So if we only have a dollar and we have to fund, you know, 10 different programs, that dollar first has to go to what's mandated by the state of Illinois, what we are told we must teach or what courses we must have. So at the core of the second tier, we always look to our core subject areas, math, English, science, and social studies, with foreign language right there really with it. And foreign language is going to become more and more a core subject as the new law is passed that is mandating that all students have foreign language. Okay? And then we go on out. We start looking at state and federal requirements and then we get to our electives and PE and then we get to our extracurriculars. So again, if we have to make cuts at any point in time, we always start at that outer ring and start moving inward, if that makes sense. So that's a model that we've used. So in making the recommendations that we did on the staffing, if you look at the staffing numbers where we're asking for those additional sections to try to reduce class sizes, it's primarily in those core subject areas. So it's following our model. We're putting money where we believe it belongs with the students. And again, just a reminder on evidence-based funding. I just wanted to talk a little bit about evidence-based funding again. We talk about our adequacy gaps and when, I know it's difficult when I come to the Board of Education and I ask for more money when we do have an adequacy gap. The only way we can start to fill that adequacy gap is, you know, quite frankly, you know, to get additional state funding. Our hands are kind of tied with the state. Our financial model that we've looked at really is all pivotal on what the state is going to do and how the state is going to fund us. Even though we have this adequacy funding gap, I think it's really important that we continue to use the decision-making model and target what cuts we do have on our students. And again, this is kind of my sales pitch, why I'm really begging the board to be able to move forward with the additional sections as we have requested. And again, just some cost comparative data. I think we do a really good job here at OTHS of managing the money that we have and applying it to our instructional program. The last time that the state of Illinois produced data was in 2020 since we've been in COVID. We haven't talked about this data. We used to talk about it every year. We haven't talked about it in a while. But I think it's really important that our community knows, that the board knows, that our instructional costs per pupil at OTHS, so how much does it cost us to provide instruction to aid people at OTHS? We rank 90th out of 97 high school districts in the state of Illinois. So that means that we have the lowest or amongst the lowest spending cost per pupil and yet we still continue to have some of the very highest achievement scores in the state of Illinois. When we expand instructional costs now to operating costs, that now starts to include your buildings. That includes other facets besides just direct instruction, but now we're including our buildings. We rank 89th out of the 97. Again, we're still in the bottom 90% of all high school districts in the state of Illinois. And then finally, when we look at our administrative costs per pupil, we rank 94th out of 97. So we're in the bottom 3%. Your administration doesn't come to the board lightly when we ask for additional funding. I think we're very good stewards of the funding that the board grants to us. Likewise, I believe that we give a good bang for our buck, that we have a very low cost per pupil when you compare our district to life districts and yet we have very high achievement here at OTHS. And I think that that speaks volumes to the things that are going on here each and every day in our halls, always and in our classrooms. Any questions?
You say high school districts. You're specifying just, like OTHS, it's just high schools. So it's not a unit district.
Right. It's impossible to compare a high school district to a unit district because costs are so different with all of the athletics, you know, with all of the extracurriculars, with everything that high schools do, the changing of class periods, the number of, you know, CTE and vocational force work and the machines and equipment and that, all those that you're operating. You have to compare apples to apples and oranges, oranges to oranges. So we don't compare ourselves to unit districts. We don't compare ourselves to elementary districts. They're not the same.
Yeah. I just want to double check those.
Yeah. And that's why we do that. But I think it's pretty indicative of where we are. Any questions? That's my report. Thank you.
Dr. Weld.
Okay, Mr. Prince. Let me get you set up. Good evening. I'm going to be talking to you this evening about the weighting of the grades, GPA, and the other grade skill considerations. But to make sure that we are all on the same page, we need a little bit of history. So, and I just want to say how awesome to have so many of you here this evening. No kidding. You're lovely. So the history behind the weighting of the grades. First of all, in 2007 is actually when we began to weigh grades. Prior to 2007, whether you took an honors class or a regular class, they were still weighted by. So the weighting began in 2007 with the grad class of 2011. So let me explain to you why that occurs. We cannot start to wait a student's grade midway through their year, through their high school career. So we start when they are freshmen. And so when we follow 2007, the freshmen had weighting. Southwest juniors and seniors did not. Then the fall of 2008, you had freshmen and sophomores and so on. You guys can do the rest. Right? So what weighting was applied? The weighting of .33 was applied. So in other words, a regular course, student earning an A received a 4.0 and in honors, back then, there was no weighting. Stay tuned. You'll learn when that happens. A .33 was applied. Okay? Why did we choose a .33 at the time? At the time, when serving all of the schools that were comparative to us in the area or the schools that may oftentimes emulate throughout the state, .33 was appropriate because that's what they were doing. Now, remember, what is the motivation for weighting? You want to make sure that you are creating the same opportunities for your students as schools that are comparative and also for college admission purposes, scholarship opportunities, and to recognize the river of our AP and honors classes. The weighting applied back in 2007 was to all As through Ds in the fall of 2015. Let me explain. In the fall of 2007, we only weighted As and Bs. Starting in the fall of 2015, the weighting was applied for letters A, B, C, and D. Back when the weighting was applied to only A and Bs, it occurred because if the student was not earning an A or a B, they were no longer permitted to stay in an honors class. Hence, you didn't even have a weighting with As or Ds. But when we rolled out the... But when we rolled out the opportunity for students to stay in, provided they then had a signature, an override form, we then wanted to recognize if a student was continuing to stay in there, that he or she would then receive that weighting as well. We then adopted the AP curriculum in the fall of 2017 with a rollout in stages. So in the fall of 2017, when we adopted the AP curriculum, and if you'd like to, I can review with you what it was. When we rolled out, for example, our science and our math, Spanish, French, music theory, calculus was a math class that we rolled out in the fall of 2017. Fall of 2018, we brought on additional courses all the way up to the fall of 2017. We did this because, so for example, in our art, we wanted to make sure that we rolled out the curriculum to support the AP because an AP art class is really not done in isolation. An AP art class, the skill development, as well as the curricular works that need to be made, take two years to develop. And so we wanted to be able to get our curriculum on board and create the time necessary for the student to experience the success in that. Same thing applied when we were looking at rolling out English. So we wanted to make sure we made all of the changes in the sophomore year to roll out AP in the junior year in the fall of 2018, to then roll out AP English and for the seniors in the fall of 2018. So the rollout was done with intentionality, to steal Mr. Pickle's word. Observations that caused the reflection of that weighting, and I have mentioned this to you, but to let you know, there were 22 schools that we pulled this fall, 22 schools of the area, as well as throughout the state, and all 22 schools were reviewed and their practices. We also want to consider students that are moving into the district. We were having a very interesting phenomenon occur where students were moving in from all around the country, and we know because of our close affiliation with Scott Air Force Base, we do have a higher mobility rate than normal. While our students were moving in, the GPAs, they were then being recalculated to the OTHS GPA scale, and they were taking significant drops. This did not make families happy. They're saying, my student's GPA went from a 3.9 to a 3.6. And so we were trying to be respectful of all of the dynamics, not just within our community, but respectful of the dynamics of our students that are coming from us from all around the world and the United States. And as I mentioned, the rigor of the honors AP coursework, the scholarship opportunities, because if you're applying to college, many times the colleges are going to take your grades, drop them into their formula, and the computer spits it out with the GPA that they're going to assign. There are some colleges that do not. With scholarship opportunities, for example, if you applied to the Scott Spouses Scholarship Program, it's based on GPA, not the degree of weighting. And so we wanted to make sure that we were giving our students that competitive edge, just like every other student who we're carrying was receiving. I explained to you about the 22 schools that we used. This was reviewed by the Academic Excellence Team. Who is the Academic Excellence Team? That would be all of the content department chairs for the district, as well as the administrative team. So they began reviewing this in the fall of 2021, and then following that, there were numerous one-on-one conversations with the chairs. The chairs would come in, express thoughts, and we would have dialogue about all of this. This was then reviewed by the Board of Education Education Committee at January 26, and the following was recommended to bring to the full Board of Education. What are the current recommendations? Remember, the weight as of now is .33. The current recommendation is to change that .33 to a 1.0. So for example, going back to an A, a four is now going to be a five. A B would be going from a three to a four if you're in the honors class. Why? Again, that chart, the schools are using a 1.0, the vast majority of them, or even higher. And so we wanted to make sure that we were. The additional recommendation. We went back and forth on a number of different topics. Should the honors classes have a different weight than our AP? If, for example, we had an honors Bio 2 and an AP Bio, we could wait, for example, the honors Bio 2 is a .5 and the AP is a 1.0. However, since we don't really have a dual track like that, we are going to continue to wait them both as 1.0. Furthermore, and this is not a trademarked term, pre-AP. Our honors classes are essentially pre-AP. That's an in-house term. And so if they are pre-AP, they are being taught at the rigor to prepare the students for the AP coursework, so therefore it would be appropriate to recognize the 1.0 throughout all of the honors and the AP. We are eliminating the A+. At this time, the A+ does not have a GPA component connected to it. It is honorary only. If you speak to our teachers that teach the students of the honors classes, they will tell you that the students will work feverishly hard in order to get an A+ because it will show on the report card. The thought process is to protect the students essentially from themselves. A 94 is a markless grade. Go get some sleep. And, and, and we, we can all laugh about that, but the reality is, our students that are taking those multiple AP and honors classes are incredibly fatigued, and this is going to allow them to say, a 95 is good enough. I don't have to have a 98 for that A+ on my record. And the point value of a plus or a minus will still be a .33. We kicked around the idea, should it be increased to a .5? Should it be, remain at a .33? Because 1 divided by 3, in other words, a minus, a regular, and a plus is easily divisible into thirds, it's at a .33 still. Discussion items that are not recommended, because as I said, we discussed many different topics. Provide a point increase for an A+ on our letter grade, but no deduction for an A-, not an A+, for A+. The designation of a plus symbol. But we decided, because would you want to say, they can earn a plus, but there would be no point deductions having a minus? Because then you can give a .5 and reward that, but not penalize a minus grade? They said, no, it still seems appropriate to recognize and divide the grade into thirds. Eliminate the pluses and minuses altogether. So a student, whether they have an 80.9 or an 88.9, would receive a B. And the thought process was, no, there's still a difference between an 80.9 and an 88.9. We shouldn't go ahead and segregate that. We discussed the topic of class rank a couple of different times. We did not settle anywhere on a recommendation for this. That is, we do have time. We are able to revisit that topic in the future. I have the good fortune of being able to speak with Mrs. Tiffany Louie frequently, and she is in regular communication with colleges about their practices because we don't want to hurt our students by eliminating class rank. But I will tell you that class rank creates tremendous angst in those top tiers. And so it's just a consideration, is it still necessary for college admission purposes or not? So we've had dialogue back and forth and back and forth, and right now, we're still going to have class rank, but it is a topic that could be considered in the future. Programs or processes that are being evaluated. When you change your weighting from a .33 to a 1.0, there are some practices that we must put our eyes upon. One of them would be honors upon graduation. So right now, we have our cum laude, our magna, and our summa at 3.8, 3.9, and 4.0. Is that where we're going to keep it, or does that need to be adjusted? We will have to bring the numbers on that to make the determination on what's going to be appropriate. It would be too premature for us to be able to do that at this time. National Honor Society, you currently need to have a 3.5. Well, that needs to be adjusted as well. The National Honor Society in-house coordinators are reviewing this information. And then honor roll. Currently, our honor roll has a 3.3 to a 3.799, and our high honor roll is a 3.8 and up. So we are aware that these need to be evaluated, and we're in process of doing so.
What's there, the one, the one other change was the D-, the D-?
Oh, I'm, thank you. Our students, if they receive a D- right now, they go from a 1.0 to a .67. A student that is earning a D- does not need a .33 deduction. And so the D- will remain on a report card because it does help, for example, if we know we need to provide some support services to that child. But the .33 just seems unnecessarily cruel almost to continue to take that away. So a student with a D- will have a 1.0, 1.0 calculated into their GPA. Thank you for asking. I appreciate it. If you would like to read more about this and the board agenda, it is item 9.9, it's a very thorough three-page keynote that you can read that provides examples and everything. So feel free, because we haven't heard enough that far. Thank you.
Dr. Schaffler.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chris. Mark is going to get that pulled up to me so you can see what I'm talking about. I'll start tonight with our monthly financials, which is actually slide 2. Thank you. Starting with our revenues, the end of February, we had collected a total of $31.9 million, just over a million of that was in the month of February. That accounts for 86% of our revenue compared to just 80% in FY '21. Our last property tax payment was not received until March of '21, so you'll see this actually catch up and they'll, they'll kind of balance compared to last year by the time we get to next month. And also, our CARES Act money that will be coming in in the year, that's done on a claim basis quarterly, so until we claim it quarterly, we, then there's the delay when we wait for it to come in, so you're going to see that backloaded on the year. So you'll see that coming in later. Then moving on to our expenditures, the end of February, we're about 67% through our fiscal year. We've expended $25 million, 2.3 of that in the month of February. We're at 58.9% of our budget compared to 61.9 in FY '21. I'm echoing the same things that I've shared with you every board meeting. It's primarily due to timing and the fact that transportation was not fully operational last year. We, we will see HLS go a little bit up later in the year depending on that, the Milburn Boiler Project, that getting approved and depending on when that ends up coming in. Then moving on, and Dr. Benway touched a little bit on evidence-based funding. If you could go to the next slide. The state budget proposal, as of right now, there is another recommended increase for next year, which is great news, of $300 million that's similar to what we saw last year. That likely, we don't know any of this until all of the calculations are made at the state level, but that likely could result in another about $700,000 increase for us going into next year. So as long as that goes forward, we're, and we're staying with that model like Dr. Benway talked about in our projections, where we're feeling a lot more comfortable about our end game. They're also talking about our categorical grants, those more money that's coming from the state. They have a recommended $96 million increase. I have listed the categorical grants that we have, and you'll also see that they're currently prorated. They've been prorated for a long time, and I actually went back to look, because I thought, how long have we, have we had these payments prorated? In 2010, we actually were at 100% in all of them, except there was a proration in state-free, state-free lunch and breakfast of 83%. But since then, it has decreased year after year. So hopefully, it, they'll still be prorated. I don't see us going up to 100%. But if they do this $96 million increase, hopefully we won't have as, as tough of a cut on the proration, and we can get a little bit of boost in that funding as well. And then finally, this is brand new right now. USDA offers supply chain assistance funds that we apply for, and actually Charple's did a lot of this work on our behalf, so thanks to them. And basically what they're doing is they're recognizing that we don't have availability of the food like we used to, that prices are going up, that we've had to package things differently because of the way we're preparing things due to the pandemic. And because of that, I know we had conversations, especially early, early on in the year, that across the nation, they're having a hard time finding meals that are appealing to students that also meet the nutritional requirements that our food service companies need to meet. So in response to that, this supply chain assistance came up. We're looking at an estimate, if not finalized yet, we have the application, and we're waiting to hear back before the funds to come in. But we're thinking that will mean $44,000 for us to put towards this. That amount's completely out of our control. We do the application, they do the formulas, and tell us what we get. And also, there's a lot of limitation of what it can be used for, but it can be used for the things that we need, which are unprocessed or minimally processed domestic food products, so we can get maybe a better quality, get some more satisfaction with our users, the students, and just more access to things that Charple has wanted to get but haven't been able to because of all the challenges listed at the top. So that's some good news in the food service world, and that's all I have for you guys to my end.
Dr. Heffler, can you remind me with the transportation? We're getting paid now based on our usage last year?
Last year, correct.
And we're using that money to pay for this year's bus services?
Primarily, yes. All the state, all the state money that's in our budget, yes. That's all, just that transportation thing, so it's lower, right?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Got it.
And it's, that's a great reason why it's very important to maintain some level of operating reserves. Because you have these changes in reimbursements that might be delayed, and you still have to be able to have the funding to operate.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pickle. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chris. We have, one of the things we prize with, with great teaching is being nimble, being flexible. If there's an opportunity to take advantage of something, you need to add value, to be able to seize on that moment. We've got that right now, so we're going to do that, okay? We're going to have, we've got, we've got a chance to celebrate some culture here. We've got a 360-degree culture in this room, and this occurred to me as I was sitting there, so I want to, I want to hit some of the highlights here. At this school, we have a tremendous philosophical emphasis on student services. And I don't know if it was planned this way, or if it's a coincidence of student services philosophy and departmental approach that we have here, but we've got it, all right? And I'm going to ask these folks to stand up as I hit the highlights. ESS and AAC, please stand up, okay? ESS and AAC, please. I, I don't want to make it, keep standing there embarrassing, but I will embarrass everybody here a little bit. ESS, Essential Study Skills Academic Assistance Center. Our colleagues that are in these roles are assisting students to develop better skills to become more successful students across the board. It goes on into all their other studies. The Academic Assistance Center is a, it's an exciting place, it's a vibrant place, it's an extremely challenging professional place because students are coming in for help in every subject, all right? And the teacher in that spot has to be ready for that and be able to meet that need, no matter what that need is, and it's truly impressive. I can go on for a lot longer about each one of these, but in the interest of time, I'm going to be as brief as I can, okay? Guidance, let's have guidance stand up. Guidance is meeting with students all day long. Guidance is the one place where you have to know everything, all right? You have to know what every class is in the building. Who can do it? You know, guidance counselors do that. They have to be able to know what the scope and sequence of these classes are. What's the next best step for a student? What's the career potential interest of the student? What's the student's college plans or post-high school plan? Everything has to be known by the guidance counselor, and they are tremendous in, in terms of their, their student services approach. We've got our health, physical education drivers, Ed folks, please stand up. Think about the things that we're dealing with in terms of our health curriculum, new classes, the personal wellness curriculum we have, the Wellness Club. Many of you heard about the blood drive that was conducted here in the midst of all the COVID challenges and so forth, still putting together something for the community that is tremendously valuable. How many of our residents in this town are behind the wheel and driving because of these folks? No, that's a good thing. That's a good thing, all right? And, you know, you've got just a tremendous effort at all times to, to serve our students and serve our community, so well done to them. We have, well, listen, I'm not going to spoil the, the, the coming report from the IMC. So we're going to hear all about the IMC services in just a moment, so, but please stand up. Dr. Porter, I'm not skipping the extracurricular involvement that we have from community members who are not on our staff but selflessly give their time for the benefit of our students. And Dr. Porter, I mentioned last month, so if you would please stand up again and, uh, social worker, Nicole. Our social workers, our social workers are meeting the most serious social emotional needs of our students on a daily basis, on call, constantly responding to very spontaneous circumstances, always with compassion, always with caring, always with expertise, all right? Our office personnel, yes. Secretaries and, and support personnel in every office fielding all manner of phone calls all day, every day. Friendly, welcoming, knowledgeable, courteous, professional, OTHS, all right? That's what, that's what I say of that. Parents, all right? Oh, yes, this is, please stand up, this is. It's Chris, you represent the, the great parents of this community tonight because we have parents that are involved in every activity. Uh, you know, you see them at every event. They're constantly, they're not only cheering the kids on, but they're supporting the kids and they're supporting the school in all manner of ways. Um, as far as our administration goes, I'm not leaving you out, all right? Our administration is, stand up. Our administrators are, are at the front door greeting students when they come in. They're at the bus lot seeing students off in the evening, and they're doing everything in between. And I will say the administrators and, uh, in conjunction with the student support services personnel, that, uh, uh, there's a lot of seamlessness there and a lot of group effort that is in place for the benefit of our kids, okay? Uh, we have Jared Moore from AV. AV, stand up. Streaming, streaming live, not only for us here, but for the millions that are watching around on the live stream, all right? Amy, I hope you stood up when I said the, the support. Did you not?
I did.
Okay, good, all right. Standing up there. All right, as I look further around the room, we've got Officer Ohr in the back, very discreet. And what he brings to our school, uh, you know, you see a uniformed police officer and you think about, um, you know, rules being enforced or so, not the case. He's here for that. He's here creating relationships with kids. He's here as a friendly police officer face to help navigate their day for them. Um, if trouble arises, we're very comfortable to know that Officer Ohr will be there for that, but, um, that, he's doing so many more things than that in terms of student fashion. Sitting over here in the back is Pam Flunk. Pam, please. Are you able to stand up, Pam? Pam Flunk writes for the, uh, Founder Weekly and shares the good news of what's going on in this community. Um, Pam served this community for years at City Hall, wonderfully. Thank you for being here every month, okay? Um, and don't thank, don't thank God for leaving the school. We're out, all right? School board members, please stand up. Corporate members are selfless, community service, civic-minded, always engaged. You see from the, the engagement that they have in the reports here tonight, they're interested, they are, are knowledgeable, they make themselves knowledgeable, they're paid zero, all right? But they support the good works of what we're doing here and they do it in a conscientious way, a civic-minded way. We're so grateful for that, okay? So, you know, what, what we've done here, and this wasn't spontaneous, but it presents itself, is we're able to see what this culture is. And we have a 360-degree community, school, school board, administration, support services, officers, um, civic, civic-minded individuals that make this community what it is, make this school what it is. And I'm honored to be a part of it.
And the man who makes every single one of us feel valued, Kathy.
All right, I see you got to top that. Give the board a big applause during the presentation.
That's true, you set us up, yeah.
Once I start this, I'll ask you, just tell me if that sounds okay for my, my. First, I just want to say thank you for giving us time this evening to give you a presentation about the Instructional Media Centers program here at OTHS. Our presentation tonight is a part of our annual review process for our various grants and our certifications. We recognize that our whole community has endured many challenges in the last two years, but our presentation tonight does not attribute to those challenges. Our presentation instead focuses us on our celebrations because despite so many hardships that we have suffered the last few years, we have a lot that we have achieved and it deserves acknowledgement. Tonight's presentation is a recorded presentation, is a concise 11-minute recorded presentation. I invite our board members to please write down any questions that you have during the presentation. And once it concludes, we're happy to field those questions.
Our very first celebration came the first month of school when we witnessed a record-breaking number of book checkouts. Compared to the first month of the 1920 school year, we are rejoicing over a 23.7% increase in circulation in the first month of this school year. We are happy to report that our circulation figures continue to show growth month to month as compared to previous school years. And we tip our hats to our English department colleagues who give their students regular opportunities for individual book selection and signee. We even witness other indicators that our students are increasingly committed to reading. In our second year of the OTHS Reading Challenge, we are happy to report that all metrics show growth from year one to two. We reported a phenomenal 333% increase in active student participation. The books our readers are reading and logging show a diverse reading community, logging variety of fiction, nonfiction, graphic novels, as well as diverse comic book content. After the start of second semester, we saw an increase of almost 43,500 minutes. Want to start to celebrate? After the many challenges of the 2021 school year, we were thrilled that our students committed to 65,205 minutes of reading for our 2021 Summer Reading Challenge. We also celebrate the strong collaboration we have with the Val and Public Library that makes the Summer Reading Challenge the amazing program that it is. Please take a moment to read what our students have stayed up the most day encountered in the Summer Reading Challenge. In addition, we continue to celebrate the gains resulting from our numerous programs aimed at increasing our students' connection to reading in their daily lives. Programs such as March Madness Book Rackets, Genre of the Month, Reading Recipes, Book Tastings, Book Bundles, the OTHS Reading Challenge, and Popcorn Vitis for Readers, along with guidance and orientations and displays, all work together to invigorate our dedicated readers and draw our emerging readers into a world of books. Our part in developing students' connections with books extends outside of the IMC as well. Our participation in the 2019 Large Print Study continues to reap benefits. Please take a moment to read one of our special education teachers' comments about the leadership that a large print collection has created in our special education world literature classroom. We don't stop at simply connecting our students to books in our IMC year classrooms. Our robust and efficient interlibrary loan program gives our students a connection to books across the US and quite literally around the world. To illustrate, one of our prolific freshman readers, whose reading selections this year we are seeing here, has alone requested thirty books to interlibrary loan per semester. We also celebrate that our library's collection is an integral part of the interlibrary loan program as evident by our most fascinating loan request to date received from Denmark, 4,250 miles away. Another special celebration this year came after being awarded an on-the-go to recover transporting libraries' spaces warrant by the Illinois State Library. This grant is intended to support libraries if they respond to and recover from the pandemic and focuses on supporting the library's effort to provide clean, safe spaces for patrons. We celebrate that OTHS was awarded $18,800 to purchase sanitizer machines for both campuses. In just five minutes, we can sanitize books, headphones, calculators, devices, charging box, and more using VPC and VGI line and high air pressure, a system that is lab-tested and certified. Our students and faculty expressed thankfulness for this service, commenting, as you see here, that they appreciate knowing our circulated resources are clean and prepared for their needs. Our celebrations continue this year when we received word that Dr. Christina Dean Stewart, a stampless-based cartoonist, editor, and professor would be our distinguished reader this year. Dr. Stewart will be conversing with our upper-level art students about her career development and career experiences. We are all very excited about her upcoming visit in April. In addition to Dr. Stewart's presence in our art classrooms, we have many other classroom accomplishments to celebrate. Our English teachers saw success when their students participated in a free-choice independent reading project and asked the NSC to develop and facilitate a book activity that would coordinate with the appreciation of literature course. This new book activity allows students to explore different types of independent reading books. Whereas they focus on fiction and other courses, this activity introduces students to short stories, graphic novels, nonfiction memoirs, and novels in verse. We must also celebrate the strength of our information literacy instruction in the classroom, which has never been more important. By March 3rd, CNN ten reported in our classroom on the process that news outlets use to validate visual depiction of current events in Ukraine. We can celebrate that our students have a firm information literacy foundation and our taught skills at every grade level to actively evaluate information in its various forms as they encounter it. Our students not only know how to evaluate information, but they also know how to locate it. This year, we again rejoice in our excellent Yale database rankings. Our rankings, number three in Illinois and in the top 200 schools in the US for search and retrieval success, illustrate that our students are performing very, very well and make with their information literacy skills to the test. We also celebrate the fact that our students are showing a commitment to using quality information found in our database platforms. Our students are also encountering high-quality news-based information in UZELA, which is being used across their curriculum and heavily used in social studies and science. We see this both in the types of articles viewed and the act of teachers. We know that our classroom efforts through the information literacy curriculum are making a difference in the education of our students. Please take a moment to read just a sampling of the feedback we received from our seniors who have progressed through four years of focused information literacy instruction. A program called Transition for College Success authored by the Kent Library at Southeast Missouri State University in the fall further confirms that we are placing our efforts in all the right places within the classroom. College students surveyed for the program indicated that more data research time is needed during the high school years. We are proud that the OTHS IMC instructional program is actively and effectively delivering the type of instruction at the high school level that college students indicate they need for college success. The Kent Library Program also illustrated that college success requires students to possess the ability to evaluate sources and employ effective search strategies. We celebrate the fact that OTHS librarians, in collaboration with classroom instructors, have developed authentic source evaluation and advanced search strategy lessons which are regularly woven into the curriculum in meaningful and relevant ways. Furthermore, the Kent Library Program sheds light on the need for college students to possess a strong command of Microsoft Office 365 and knowledge to effectively navigate Google for research purposes. We again have much to celebrate as our students grow stronger in their understanding and use of Microsoft Office 365 each year they attend OTHS. Similarly, our students grow stronger in their use of Google for research because OTHS librarians deliver lessons to develop the skill at every grade level. Our efforts in the classroom make us ready, ready for changes like the upcoming Amendment to School Code requiring a unit of instruction on media literacy. OTHS is represented on the Illinois State Board of Education's Media Literacy Advisory Group, a group that is tasked with producing resources to assist Illinois high schools in their integration of media literacy instruction. We are proud of the fact that our current curriculum includes units of instruction that address topics laid out in the new law. All our efforts in today's classroom made an impact on the future. We are encouraged that the progress our students make every year emboldening their information literacy skills. Our students have an appetite for becoming savvy consumers and producers of information. This appetite brings hope for a better information landscape in the future where the students we are educating right now will be making a difference in jobs as information curators and literacy advisors to bring forth a culture of accountability. It's important to note that our students are not the only ones learning. While our time in virtual learning was difficult, we learned many valuable professional lessons on which we continue to build with our students today. We have witnessed our students benefiting from video series library instruction when paired with live instruction. Our findings align with a study conducted at the University of Michigan Library for students signed the many benefits of video series instruction, such as the ability to re-watch the lesson and use accessibility features, among other benefits. While we have many wonderful accomplishments to celebrate, it's people that we celebrate most. Mirroring the findings made in a period of review in School Library Journal is evident that the labor-intensive work of our own IMC staff members results in our IMC services occurring seamlessly for our students and faculty. It is our IMC staff's dedication to the work of the library, much of which is invisible to our students and faculty, that makes our IMC program the thriving, far-reaching program that our students and faculty appreciate here at OTHS. It's clear that our students are drawn to our IMCs and IMC staff. In fact, we have achieved one of our many goals this year as we have reintroduced our students to the IMC and its programs of support. The IMC team has given great attention to our various displays, both inside and outside the IMC, and to our spaces to draw our students in. It's so great to see our students back in the IMC using and enjoying all that it offers them. One program that speaks to the importance of the IMC space in the student's school day is the IMC's Alternative Lunch Setting Program, which has witnessed a setting increase this year. In this program, OTHS social workers recommend placements and IMC staff make sure students' needs are met while utilizing the IMC in alternative lunch settings. Please take a moment to read this touching sentiment from an OTHS student. Our students are also drawn to our virtual space. With an increase in use during virtual learning, we now see students confident in accessing and making full use of the nearly 160 book guides and virtual assets that we maintain. From scheduling appointments with OTHS librarians to search specific book guides, our students have developed an attitude for connecting with virtual IMC services, which is occurring on average 30 times a semester per student. It is certainly exciting to see growth in our students' self-efficacy. In summary, our greatest celebration center on our students who are visiting the IMC, utilizing our services, and learning alongside us in the classrooms daily. Their presence with us is what we celebrate most this year.
Before I field questions, I would like to acknowledge my partner in everything, Melissa Tedesco. She is a, an amazing asset to our program. She is a wonderful source of support for me. She delivers a level of instruction at our Milburn campus and also at our junior level that is just top-notch. And so, you know, thank you, Melissa, for everything that you did.
First of all, that was an excellent presentation. Thank you so much. Um, and thank you all for, we really appreciate it. Is there anything from the board that you need to assist you in helping the IMC out a little bit?
I think in the future, we have room for doing some more reinvention of the IMC as a program and what it can offer our students. I think the Alternative Lunch Setting is a testament to the fact that there's new ways that we can better support our students and make use of our program. And, um, as the lunch, uh, menu items are increasing in cost, so are books, so are resources. And, um, you know, all of our databases are going up again this year and so there will be need for increased funding to continue to be able to deliver the same things that we're delivering right now. And so, you know, we'll make those requests as, as needed. But our leadership has always been very good about, uh, listening to what we need and making... about listening to what we need and making sure that we have the resources we need to get the job done, as evidenced by our presentation and I think our numbers. Coming out of a pandemic, I can't stop smiling about how great our numbers look. Thank you for asking.
So you talk about numbers. So since the restriction of the mask and COVID-19 have been lifted, have you seen an increase of people in the I N C and the N C?
So it really did make a difference to us. Our students that are coming in are coming in all of a sudden as they need and want. We are finding though that a lot of our students are seeking us as a safe space where they feel that they can, in some cases, eat lunch in an area where there is no one else around, and they feel safe taking off their mask and eating. They also appreciate, I think, the study space, just the space in general. We are seeing that. In fact, we've had bits come in to us. Thank you so much. Most of us continue to wear our masks because we know that our students, that makes them feel more comfortable. And so I think we're providing a very safe place for them as we kind of transition.
About e-readers, do you have much interest in that regard?
As far as ebooks go?
Yes.
Yes. So our stats for our ebook usage are off the charts as always. Some of that is evident in our database numbers that we report. Our students are, they have become very savvy as we top and have search for e-content. And in fact, most of our nonfiction collection continues to build in the ebook platform versus in the print platform because I can, we can only give one book to one kid, whereas when we purchase a forty-six-dollar ebook in nonfiction, it's accessible twenty-four-seven to every student. So it's really where our money investment should be.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're very good.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right. We are on to I N C five, our third committee, Education Committee Report.
Education, we met on March 2nd. We went over the certificate, D O E certificate review that we had went over and retrieved more details of the students that will be offered for the next couple of years and discussed that. We also reviewed the math lab, to see if that lab would still be needed in future, which I think we all kind of agree that we thought it was a very useful lab, and the grant has come away that we should continue on with it. And then we talked about the senior high noise exam, enacted the policy and how it was written, and discussing if it should be under review again. And then we also, we didn't have time to talk about the curriculum, sensitive material, so that we want to write names up instead on March 30th.
Best Committee, so we haven't had meetings since our last school board meeting, but we do have a subcommittee of the Best Committee, and we're continuing to investigate something called Community Foundations. The group is going out and interviewing community foundations in other areas to understand it better and right now just do a lot of research. Get to the, yes, we met on March 15th and discussed the survey results that were given to all of our recovery students, noting some irises or some results that we didn't expect. And from that, we developed and some focus group questions which will be given orally to those same students or many of those same students. Actually, there were down eight questions, and then the committee was just polled to see maybe rank order because these interviews will be of limited time, and so whether we can get to all any of those questions or not, we'll see. And then we'll be discussing the results of that in our next meeting on April 12th.
Okay, we met Tuesday. We have a copy of the report, ten-year holder, however, I would like to mention a couple of things. As you all are aware of the problem with the supply chain in the country is affecting us as well with a couple of our projects. And then the South Anics, we've begun demolition and reconstruction over there, and we ran into a problem with vericulite, which partners use this product. However, the EPA treats it like asbestos, so we have to treat it like asbestos. So we're gonna go off a bit in that regard, and we hope to have those bits to you by the next board meeting.
Can we use some like safety money like with asbestos abatement for that?
You know, I don't know. I can check into that. We didn't talk about that at the pandemic.
That might be.
That might be an option.
Yeah, we'll have to abate all of it. We're creating the opening in the cinder block walls. This has been poured into the openings in cinder block walls. So we're making some adjustments to the window heights, especially along the rock fifty side, and that will, I guess this stuff settles in, so we won't have this big a problem there with the door openings in. That's gonna need to happen. And that means everybody else is offside.
Okay, well, that's it. We meet again on April 2nd, April 19th, two days before our regular board meeting.
Finance Committee, we did meet on the sixteenth. We talked about some financial options. There was a five-year consideration flowchart that Dr. Benway had for us, of things that we have been doing, that we continue to do, and then possibly some things that we might look at. We looked at, looking at what's the, is it a high cost? What's the cost, what's the benefit, and what's the probability? And we looked at, Rob's shaking his head, so he's there. We are going to have another meeting on April 1 through 12. I presented, we're still working on that. Stiefel, which is our financial partner for bonds, there's some interesting, we discussed some interesting possibilities from the last couple of years of paying, for paying off our Milford bonds, if possibly, A, sending us a little bit of money on paying the rest of those off, and also possibly have an opportunity to inject some cash into our working cash fund. So that's, the entire board will be invited. It will be an open meeting for, we'll be posted whenever that is, so the public would like to come look at bond tables and have your eyes blast over, join the party. No, it's, it's Stiefel, they're very, they didn't, excellent with this. Personnel did meet as well on the eighth, per request of the board. We talked about a couple of things, it was a good meeting. Talked about, we talked about a succession plan. We have some administrative creditors and senior leaders that are going to be retiring in the next two years, two or three years. And so the board was wanting to just kind of get with Dr. Benway a kind of a succession plan, kind of how that was gonna look, and that was presented. There's some timelines that we'll be considering, there's gonna be more board work done on that this summer. We're going to, I'm gonna recommend that we have I A S B, Executive Search Section, come in and give the board, they will come in for free and do a briefing for the board on Superintendent Search, which I think would be beneficial for us to do. We talked about non-surpay, looked at some figures that we're gonna have to take some action on due to one, wages going up per law, and just we need to make some movements on some certain pay, certain areas of our staff and our employees that we need to shift up. So, no future meeting for that yet. And then the final committee is, we only met today.
Yeah, so pretty, pretty fresh with feedback. Darcy attended the meeting with me, but we met with the city council, a couple of city council members and then the others, some other school districts.
The Navy Committee is City of Fallon, O'Fallon Schools Group, sorry.
It's not a, it's not a.
It's not a formative committee. It's not an OCHS board committee. It's a collaboration effort with the city, right?
But we're reporting out, so we're attending kind of a collaboration, collaboration with the city, city hall, basically. You know, kind of following the whole sales tax chase, we're just going into it, but. So I think we're, I felt like, you know, today we're starting to pick up some steam and getting good conversation, good collaboration, you know, with the city council. We're talking about, you know, some issues that we have with tax credits, you know, there's a big deal with, you know, as schools and as the city, and, you know, I think they're starting conversations with some state representatives, Stewart and Hoffman, so we'll probably work together to kind of continue some of those conversations. We talked about, you know, employment that we have that could potentially be shared or reduced, things like that, where we could share space, share costs in both the city and the schools, get a benefit overall, just both of the groups to kind of reduce costs and things like that, both the city and the school.
And this is not just us, it's District 90, Shiloh, 100%, 203, I think I'm wrong, of course. It's almost like an best committee type of working with the city, especially the two city council members that are the finance committee, I guess, is that what it is? Thanks, Jonathan.
No, I think that's good.
Thanks for stepping up, I appreciate that. All right, time for comments from visitors. If you've been here before, you know the drill, go up, introduce yourself. We'll let you have five minutes, if you need to take five minutes and address the board and.
I'll be fast because I have a school backpack in my van, and it's late. Okay, I'm glad that we're changing the GPA, or please vote to do that, that's really important when you're applying for college for my oldest son. Having the point three instead of the five-point oh for the hard classes really does make it weird when you're applying for things. Don't get rid of the class rank for a couple of reasons. One, it's kind of like first cheer in the end, it's motivating, so some of the higher teachers will work harder. I know they're exhausted, but there's, there's also scholarships that you can apply for, but you have to be within so many spots of the number one. And so getting rid of class rank would eliminate that, I guess, ability for our kids to apply for those scholarships, so I hope that, that you kind of just drop that from the discussion. Change the GPA, leave the class rank, we're all good. Adding another band, teacher, Dr. G., Mr. Carter are busting tail for a band that is monstrously size, and they really need a man. I know, because we're in it and we're living it, and I feel like she eats, sleeps, and greets band, and so does Mr. Carter, and she probably would like to sleep and spend some time with her kiddo. Adding another band brought her really a lot, her to have a little bit of her life back. She didn't ask me to come speak on her behalf, I just wanted to do that, so I do hope that you'll add that change in. Tiffany, Lukey, you know, oh, why was I looking at her?
Because that's.
I did not think that Martha Blackburn could be replaced. She was extraordinary. I don't know, I don't know, it's okay. Have a moment? I did not think Martha Blackburn could be replaced. I didn't. She was phenomenal. My son called her the goat, right? So greatest of all time, I did have to decipher that for her. Couple of days ago, I sent her an email, and her response was perfect. And it was from a mom that was really having a rough moment over a kiddo that sometimes has a rough day, or a rough lot of days over a lot of years because of some things out of her control. And the response, she's a gem. That is all. If she needs a ride, just go to her. They all hear that too. But she's an excellent replacement, and we all did well in choosing her. So that's really all I have to say. I gotta go home and take my kids back so she can work on that classroom. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Porter. I'm actually gonna say more than I'd at least planned it because I feel like maybe more people will hear about the club since we're live streaming, so.
I apologize for giving.
A little more history. As you know, my name is Dr. Dawn Porter, and I'm the sponsor for the Martin Luther King Junior Legacy Club, a club that was started in spring 2018 to promote positive images of African-Americans in the school and community. Of the past four years, we have hosted events to celebrate African-American contributions through different genres of music, game night highlighting African-American culture and trivia, and culturally significant games like Spades and Dominos. We've also held events to inform the community about Kwanzaa celebrations and create the Black History Jeopardy game as well. We've also held a talent night called Black Expressions How Great They Are, showcasing different types of talent, including spoken word, photography, dance, music, singing, and all the other areas that students may feel like they have something to share. We participated in homecoming activities, we've set up displays in both I N Cs during Black History Month, the I N C. They have been very supportive of our events and helping to promote them, so I'm very thankful for, for them as well as the different schools in Milford, at least. She's been very helpful with me to put things up there as well. In the past, our students have engaged in fundraisers at Dairy Queen to inform the community about our club and its mission. Our club also engages in advocacy, and in addition to speaking at a board meeting in the past, students who are requesting more African-American teachers in the school, we have a commitment to increase the African-American teachers in the school. So I just wanted to speak on that, that I know we've always had many challenges, and you mentioned that we're gonna be looking to hire more teachers, and I hope that we can maybe find a way to recruit more teachers of diverse backgrounds. Lastly, I wanted to announce over our upcoming event. As you know, I mentioned our meeting at the museum at the last meeting, we had to cancel due to the cancellation of school for two days, and so we are back. It will be held April 7th at 6:30 PM in the Panther Center. Because we've moved it to later, it's, and now we've got track of so many other sports and activities, students weren't able to come after school to work, so I am coming during the school day from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I did three days last week, two days this week, I'm doing two days next week, and two or three days the following week, so I can meet with the students. So if a student is asking about passes or something, that's what that's about, because I'm in the Panther Center to go over with them, help them with their research, help them prepare their scripts as we bring Black History to life. Yep, I think that's everything. Thank you. I do have some little flash, oh, that's the other thing. As you know, I mentioned it last time, there's a QR code, because when we do this event, we did it the last two years, we collect books that we donate, some of which we gave to the I N C this year. They were displayed during Black History Month without fifteen, seven, fifteen books, and then the rest go to area local schools, depending on the age and level. So if you see one of these, there's a QR code, you can click on the QR code, it's an Amazon wishlist, and you can purchase books that we can donate to I N C, more comment that are appropriate for here, as well as schools and the community. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to our business portion now, Agenda I N seven. I have a motion to approve our consent agenda that's entirely, which is Agenda I N seven point two, point seven, point one, four, and listed financial report for February 22, the payment of bills from March 22, the Freedom of Information Act requests. We just pulled the lots of.
Can we pull out seven point six, which is the Education Committee's, our march first, there's some discussion about, so we can clarify it at our next Education Committee's capable of. Do I need to make a motion move on that, or can we just pull that off instead of this?
Can you make an amended motion?
I think that we remitted 7.46 from the consent, but vote on all the other ones.
I'll second.
Is that amended?
Does that suffice?
Yes. Okay, so we are, we have a motion, amended motion, that we will, that we are approving everything on the consent, except for 7.6. Meeting for minutes, the meeting minutes for the March 1st Education Committee meeting.
Pop?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Stoffel?
Aye.
Richter?
Aye.
Dernbeck?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye. Old business, Dr. Benway, this is the consideration of board policies, first reading. This is your collection for the board, this is for our holiness. This is all the school board, all the school board policies. So, there you go, school board members.
There's a slew, there's a slew of board policies coming through, so that's, this is just the start.
The highlighted parts are the changes?
Correct.
Okay. And I have a question though on one thing we need with the committees. Because it has our committees listed, standing board committees, and one of them says board policy committee, which we don't have, and the education committee's not listed on there. But I know like the parent teacher advisory committee is a subcommittee of the education committee, so do we need to change?
I'll take a peek at that, Martha.
Okay.
And see, I think, I think that's the policy that we currently have.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll take a look and see if we need to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Did it look like someone didn't have highlights? Are they all supposed to have highlights?
No, some, the changes are in the footnotes.
Yeah.
Or the legal references.
References of school law.
So we still, when they, when they have changes there, even though the policy body stays the same, we still bring it up, so we're just staying as current as we can.
But we remove all those.
Right, the footnotes always get removed before the policy is actually adopted. But it's, it's there for y'all to read and kind of go through, there's a lot of good information in those footnotes, you know, about a variety of things, so.
And maybe I missed it, the policy that has the organizational title of the school?
That was, that was not one that press had, you know, suggested revision. I'm, I'm just going from the latest press release on what they're saying to revise, and there's just numerous policies.
Right, but for us, we changed our titles and tenure.
Right, we won't, we won't change those till the first of the year, when people actually take on those positions.
First of the school.
Right, first of the school year.
Okay, item 9, we're coming into the new business now. May I have a motion to approve the teacher NTE changes as presented in Dr. Benway's report?
So it's that now.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Brown?
Aye.
Stoffel?
Aye.
Richter?
Aye.
Dernbeck?
Aye.
What's the motion on the floor?
It's the NTE, like the last.
Thanks, aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye. I remind you too, they have a motion to approve the important compensation discipline forms of dismissal of personnel on yellow sheets using previous roll call.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? Being done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 9.3, they have a motion to approve the pay applications for the construction projects as listed in your handout using previous roll call. Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? Is this the final one for the band of correlation?
It is not the final.
Okay.
There's still retainage out there.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 9.4, may I have a motion to approve the health, life, safety, emergency boiler replacement if it's over in campus using previous roll call? Sub move. Any discussion, clarification? Being done, roll, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 9.5, we are, may I have a motion to approve the amended school calendar for this year, 21, 22, using previous roll call? Dr. Benway, any, anything glaring, just off of snow days?
No, no.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 9.6, may I have a motion to approve the school calendar for 22, 23, using previous roll call? Sub move. Any discussion?
I would just like, we have members of our calendar committee, you know, here, and again, I just want to appreciate them for, for their working with their colleagues and so forth, to bring us information to put together calendars and stuff. Thank you all.
Can I just say something, just in all fairness, because I made a similar comment at another board meeting as a parent. I, I think that it's important for the districts to try and align their calendars as much as possible. I think our community expects us to collaborate with each other. And I think that when we can collaborate and align our calendars, it instills confidence in the community that we can collaborate on other larger items like curriculum alignment and student awareness. And so I just want to continue to encourage that conversation. I did have a question with respect to the spring break, Easter break, or whatever the name is called. I know ours is three days, and there are two of our feeder districts that are four days. And that was, the four day was a change, at least for District 90, that they implemented in the 2019, 2020 calendar, or school year, which obviously COVID jacked up. And so there's a concern that, you know, we're in school, but they are not in school on that Wednesday. And that it might potentially encourage parents to pull their high schoolers out of school on that Wednesday for their families. So could we, just for conversation purposes, maybe go for next year? Because this year will be kind of the first real year where those four days versus the three days are in alignment. Can we like look for data for attendance to see how it impacts our student attendance that day? Because I would like to at least cut that conversation.
Yes, we can, we can have conversation, Dr. Wilk's going to share a little bit about testing and some, some impact.
Interestingly enough, the statewide assessment date for the junior SAT, which is a graduation requirement, to be that Wednesday, the 13th. So the Wednesday before what would be our Thursday and Friday break is a mandatory test for all junior students. So for us, not having school that day was not an option. We, we had to have school that day, and that was part of the conversations Dr. Benway was having about the importance of trying to align them. So for us, we are concerned, we have had two junior students say that they are going to miss that day and are going to have to take the makeup because their families are going on vacation. So we will definitely, because when we give the SAT, we very carefully track attendance on that day, and we will be able to easily pull back and see how that.
It'll be a little skewed then, even still because the juniors are going to have to be there. And I think in the 2019, 2020 year, they ended up taking that Monday after Easter, which again, didn't matter because of COVID. But that was going to be the testing day.
The testing day was Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
And we thought people wouldn't come back from spring break ready to test, so we wanted a day of kind of preparation. The, the, it's unfortunate that the state marries its testing day right around that weekend all the time. And it kind of forces on hand for consideration of what's best in the interest of kids, who've got to take the exam.
Okay, I, I just thought it might be interesting to hold a date now that they, it is the first full year.
Absolutely.
So we can have that conversation with our feeder district.
It's a good idea, thank you.
Martha, I recommend that we bring this up at the best committee, because we do have all the districts there to make it a best committee topic that we try to address there.
Okay. Maybe we would have brought her on the best committee, so you guys can do that. Okay, I don't have the other ones. Thanks for your input.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 9.7, may I have a motion to approve the summer school offerings for summer of 22, using previous roll call? Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion or comment?
Is there a transportation component for summer school for the, the kind of the spiritual, the spiritual, for the other departments? Is there transportation component for the kids here?
There has not, we have not provided that option in the past.
Is that something that you think the students would need, or, or is that being asked for?
I've not received any requests over the years.
I have received requests.
All right, so everyone's behind it, the summer school, pretty much, I don't know.
The one year, years ago, the couple of years ago, we did write in to provide it, but we did not have the interest. It was actually built into a grant, so we pulled it out of the grant.
Okay, perfect.
We did try it in the past.
Perfect.
And just, just to make, um, understanding clearly, is still able to have, for those kids, if they have to be able to afford virtual school for summer school? Is there opportunity for the kids scholarships or funding to help them?
Yeah.
You go ahead.
Sure, well, the Endowment Fund graciously provides some voucher funding for our students. We primarily use that for students in recovery. So they provide a thousand dollars to cover the cost for students, there's an application that students complete for that.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a thousand dollars always used?
It is.
And is there additional requests beyond the thousand?
Yes, and there's, I have a request for them, and they have approved.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 9.8, they have a motion to approve the board's goals for 22, 23, which we, we use previous roll call, which was part of our board retreat, there in the packet. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 9.9, may I have a motion to approve the GPA values for grades earned in regular and honors AP courses beginning with the class of 2026 as listed in your packet using previous roll call?
Sub move.
Second. Any comment, discussion? Explain very well, describe well. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Benway, I'm assuming we're tabled 9, 11, 10, 11, because we don't have the, that's the title of school plan.
That would be correct.
Okay. Item 9.12, I may have a motion to approve our IHSA membership renewal for 22, 23, using previous roll call? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I notice that we're not getting charged this year for that membership. 9.13, may I have a motion to approve student trips in access to the neurologies and previous roll call? Sub move. Any discussion?
I guess we're not using the, we're writing the card for the competition at Missouri because ours isn't available.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I think? The last item is 9.14, this was based on a conversation that I had with a board member and probably another board member indirectly over the last couple of months about strategic planning for the district. And so I said, I said, sure, let's, we can get on the agenda for a board discussion. Would James, would you like to just kind of, kind of hear what we talked about a lot?
I mean, we don't need to go through the whole.
Sure, you know, we've got these board goals that we just approved, right? Attaching these goals to action and measurements and outcomes that we can see and present to the community over a longer timeframe, you know, five, you know, five years. Pick the timeline, you know, five year plan is always thrown out there. And meeting as a board, connecting as a board to discuss how to do that, how to evaluate that, how to present that, I think is important. And yeah, that's, I think that's just what we discussed.
Yeah, that's very high level, I'll just leave it at that.
In the effort of time.
Yeah.
Yes, I, 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 James, I had a great call, conversation. Please understand that what we, what, what we've talked about, we're not faulting anything that the current administration is doing or has done. The board, the district is, has done great planning strategically, one, three, five year, we have facilities, five year plan and beyond, we have a financial, five years. It's very hard to pin down or to build a really tight and concise level planning levels for school districts because of the enormous unknowns. We just went through two years ago. The state always, I mean, you wouldn't, if you're, if you like to follow the state, and we get from ISB, we get the list of. I think every legislature in the legislature puts five, six bills on it, and there's like hundreds of bills every year they get in. They don't all get, but there's a lot of them that get passed, and they impose mandates on the school, and it affects guidance, and it affects the teachers and the district. So I think if we, if the board is wanting to go in the direction of, of looking at maybe a little more of a strategic focus, and I, I think that would be something beneficial. My personal opinion, but the board has to decide. I think that would be something that would be good that we can maybe look at, I don't know how it would be, whether we would want to look at a committee. I personally think that if we're looking at strategic, I would, I would be more comfortable with the board as a whole, because it takes, you know, it takes the board to give the direction to the, to the district. So, has anybody else had any other comments or?
I, I have a lot. I mean, for example, the Illinois State Board of Education has a strategic plan right now specific to equity initiatives. So I don't think a school board in any capacity coming up with an official strategic plan is unusual. There are tons of examples on there, local school districts do them all the time. I would be interested in looking into something that involves the collaboration of all the stakeholders as we're putting together these types of things. So not just the board, the administration, the teachers, and community leaders and things like that.
And the stakeholders are 300 people. Pam, were you in 90, planning with me 20 years ago, I guess it was, when we did it out at Fulton?
Yeah.
That, so that's, yeah, basically what you have is approximately 300 people coming in, and it's a very extensive plan, and everybody's all excited about it. But you go through all this work and you know what happens to that plan? It gets shelved. So what does?
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, and James, when James and I were talking, I, I suggested that if, if the board is, is looking at pursuing that, I think we need to take baby steps. Because we have a fantastic plan with what Dr. Benway has had in place with Mr. Turnback and then Mr. Bechlin, the teams that they have for, as long as I've been with them, since 2007. It's, it's there, we get the briefings, we get the, we get the updates, we get the, we get the goal, we get the goals and the, and the action plan. So I think instead of trying to, like Keith was saying, come up with this giant, I mean, you can go online, James, James sent me a couple of things that he found. One of them was, you know, it's a billion dollar school district for a budget goal. I think it would be good to maybe parse it down to kind of maybe where we have the, our five areas of our board goals, maybe. So it's, it's, it's worth looking at, it's worth looking into, I think, just be kind of thinking about how we would want to do that. And, and if you have suggestions, certainly email me or, or, or Dr. Benway.
Yeah, I agree with you guys more, I think it's good practice, and it helps facilitate conversation between the school board and administration, so. So, I think it's good, but baby steps, thanks a lot, it's nice. We have a lot of great stuff already, and maybe a good first step, you know, over the next six months or twelve months, it's actually rolling up, but we already have.
And we talked about some of that in our little retreat, twenty-four, twenty-five. What's our role going to be, what, what do we do with Milford? That could be one of the, one of the things we can start with, so. I appreciate, I appreciate the passion that James has for that.
Mr. Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Benway.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I reached out to the Illinois Association of School Boards, and I spoke with Patrick Allen, and I asked him what kind of services they would provide. You know, they kind of do a, I, I wouldn't say a mini, it's, 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 you know, the, the city of O'Fallon just went through, O'Fallon twenty forty.
Right.
And they hired a facilitator group to come in, and it was, it was very, very extensive. So, I think that there are levels of, of a strategic planning that, that can be done. So, but I did talk to Patrick Allen about a combination of potentially a strategic planning session to at least get us started in thinking that way, and, and he could couple that along with the board evaluate, the self-evaluation. We could do that on a, you know, one day, you know, type of thing. So, that's a, that's an option that's available for consideration as well, if, if the board would like. You know, the, the big extensive evaluation, I can, I can look into the group that was used by the city and other groups to.
For clarification, what the city did was a twenty forty master plan, and then they do smaller five-year strategic plans as far as their actual budgeting and planning.
I think we should start.
We can just start a smaller.
Yeah. I just want to get out, I think we do need to do a strategic plan, and if it's not smaller, and I think it would be great if we had a facilitator to lead us or give us the right direction to go, because I'm not sure all of us are experts in how to go about, because I think some of us think we have a strategic plan, and I don't, I do strategic planning for my real life, and we, we don't. So, I think it would be great to have a facilitator in here to help us do that. And I think we do need to take baby steps, like you said, but I think we need to get some type of direction, so we will know what type of superintendent with the complications that we are going to go in our direction to hire. So, I think it's going to be important for us to know what direction we're going in, so we know what type of superintendent that we should hire.
I think you guys all have a chance to, this month's ISBA publication, our trade publication, has a really good cover story about.
ISB Journal?
Yep, ISB Journal has a really good cover story on our metrics, planning, how to use them, and so.
Okay. All right.
So, what's the next step?
Yeah, would you like me to reach out to the ISB? Do you want me to look at other potential facilitators?
I didn't even, I didn't even look on the ISB website, but do, do they have a description of the course perhaps on there?
Um, he was, he was pretty nondescript when I spoke with Patrick on the phone. He said really that, that, that your association is much better at the board's self-evaluation, and that the strategic planning really is just kind of to get the start and point you in the right direction and kind of get the wheels. I don't know if that's a value, since we're kind of starting up to use our organization, or if we want to try to find a, a group to facilitate that at a higher level.
Potentially, what a good first step, not a, not a committee, but like a smaller task group that can kind of communicate between the board and administration, try to come up with some expectations, you know, general timelines. General scope of, you know, what this should be, and then might, maybe that can get involved. So that we, we get to know that.
So, are you thinking about making, having a couple of, some board members to be there, or incorporating?
Potentially that, or you, you know, maybe a board member and an administration member, but, you know, the job is to work across the board and collect feedback and try to level set expectations.
Can we at least have to see what ISB can offer, at least so that we're all on the same page about what we're wanting to accomplish?
I can, I can give some more information. Yeah, and if I, if I have it, I'll email it out to you, whatever, who decides.
GBD.
Yes, GBD. Next board meeting will be the twenty-first of April, on Thursday. If we have an amended tax levy, that will be part of that. Upcoming board dates are very important, spring break for June fifteen and eighteen. Any other board member comments?
Dr. Benway, do we need to discuss transportation for extracurricular activities? Do we have that resolved?
We, we don't have it resolved fully. I mean, we're using, we're filling in with some charter buses for sports where they just don't have enough bus drivers to cover. We've been fortunate where they have had some trained, and, and we've reduced it to a minimum. Nope. Okay, so I don't know how many, you know, right now we're using, but it's a, it's a bare minimum. I think we had it down to six charters that we were going to have to use just for conference travel. We were trying to do it to the furthest destination, such as Alton, you know, whenever we had to take a charter, but unfortunately, there's, there's just not drivers to, to drive the big yellows. So, we decided, we had, we had discussed, just so, I, I was speaking with Mr. Richter as head of the Facilities and Transportation Committee about the possibility of maybe allowing some of our students to a closer map, maybe in Belleville, to drive on their own. And we talked about that at length, and I, I think we both felt a little uncomfortable about that, and, and so we, you know, are continuing to, to rent vehicles whenever we can or to charter a bus if that's the necessity to do so.
Is the bus company making up that cost then to us, because they're, they're not fulfilling their contract to us then?
They are not.
So, I run the DOD plus program for Department of Defense, and this is a nationwide problem. We have over four hundred and twenty buses in, in our program, and we, the Department of Defense, we're not able to complete our mission because of the shortage of bus drivers. Not alone with the shortage of bus drivers, but also the shortage and, oh, the increase in fuel costs. So, now, you know, along with the price that we, we, we probably will see this, the price of fuel has gone up, so they don't have bus drivers, and they don't, and they are charging more for regular bus drive than it would normally cost. They don't anticipate this one way. I also run the rental car program, and as you know, the chip shortage is very real, and that will, that, that is heavily impacting the rental car industry, and they don't see that.
Shortage is one way.
Either for them, and so our ground transportation is in dire priorities, and.
I, I do want to.
The department has also countered that.
I, I hear, I hear that, and I understand that if, if a company has made a promise to the school that they're going to fulfill these services under a contract, and we're incurring additional costs because they can't fulfill those, those services, they breach the contract with the school, in, in my opinion.
Well, let's say, that's extenuating circumstances.
Yeah.
It's a nationwide.
Right, again, the, the thing, James, just keep in mind, I don't want to cut off our nose to, you know, to spider face, so to speak, because if, if we impose that kind of penalty on our bus company, they're going to say, hey, we're going, we're giving you thirty days, no, we're not, go out for bed. And the last thing that we want to do right now is to go out for bed and bid bus service.
Illinois Central has been very good just games, yeah.
No, no, I agree with you, but I don't like.
I really don't look into that too, because we have a lot of award contracts that are a good problem, and our other units throughout the military wants to say they need to, you know, pay us up or do that contract, and we are sending the letter out tomorrow, sending the letter out saying, please.
I, I do want to, I do want to mention.
I just want to say, that's not wise for us to go after, because we won't get a B and replace them.
And, and I, I just want to commend Todd Moore, I know he's not here tonight, but Todd Moore and the athletic department, they have worked with other school districts, and they have rearranged some of the conference play on an off day where maybe a bus was available. So, so some events have been rescheduled, they've worked really, really hard, you know, to accommodate that. And then, again, the bus company has tried to shift around some time. When we talk about the, the schools' calendars for next year, we, we've tried to work with our feeder districts to potentially, if they're going to have early release days, to do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays when our conference plays at the highest, so that they can be done with the buses when we need them. So, we're really trying to work through this issue from all avenues and all aspects.
Their early release would be on Wednesday.
That's District Ninety, but they have their own fleet, but Dawn's going to, it's a one oh four.
And Darcy, did I miss something in regard to your conversations over golfing? Do we establish a date or not?
No, we have not established a date yet.
Okay.
So, we, we threw out a potential date, and I, I didn't get enough takers, so we're going to look at a different date where more board members can participate.
Okay, any other, there is no more comments, most of you dismissed? No, no. Is that a call there? Thank you.
I can't wait to watch it, Ash, and see how it was.
Everything worked.
Yay, all right.